Please stand for the invocation by Doug on Douglas and the pledge of allegiance by Jim Steed.
Fire your heads and pray with us if you would. Praise grain of seed. Victory to all, wonders and civils. Pray also, guidance to both.
Amen.
Come in, please. Pledge allegiance to God.
Amen.
All those who.
Okay, we do have a quorum tonight. I need to get approval of minutes for the previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the June fifth meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. I need approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Okay.
Have a motion second. All those in favor? Right hand, motion carries. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Clum County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on July first, two thousand and twenty-five. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Mixon to obtain a request to speak for them. Any requests with a public hearing will have a minimum of ten minutes permitted per side for the presentation of opinions, data, and evidence by proponents or opponents of a request. The applicant will be allowed to speak first, and any member of the public may speak after. Either side may cede their time during the hearing if they so desire. Now, we're getting into the debate agenda, the new business, final plat. Marshall Mills, Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a final plat for Marshall Mills off Harlem Grove Town Road. This is the location of the development on the south side of Harlem Grove Town Road, just outside the city limits of Grove Town. And the final plat includes twenty-eight single-family lots with a minimum lot size of one point zero five acres and an average lot size of two point two five acres. Minimum setbacks are sixty feet from the center line of the private roads and a hundred and ten feet from the center line of Harlem Grove Town Road. Required side setbacks are a minimum of ten feet, and the required rear setback is twenty feet or ten feet from the edge of the buffer. There's thirty-five acres of open space on this property that will be deeded to the HOA. And this is a photograph of the existing site, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Marshall Mills off Harlem Grove Town Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Getting into the public hearing part of the agenda tonight. H one B one provisional home occupation. Farm Fresh Gunter Family Farms, Danielle.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation for Farm Fresh, which is a food truck to be located at thirty-three oh six Tom Bartles Road. This shows the location of the property on the west side of Tom Bartles Road near its intersection with Cobham Road. And the property is zoned residential agricultural as are all of the surrounding properties. This shows the aerial of the existing site with the existing house and accessory building on the property. And the intent is to use a portion of that accessory building for the commissary related to the food trucks, essentially the commercial kitchen piece. Health Department requirements require that a commercial kitchen be separate from the residence. So that's not something that can be done inside the residence in most cases. So in this situation where they do have the acreage to request this provisional home occupation, this is a valid way to have the food truck and the commissary on the residential site. There is already provisional home occupation operating on this property for Hannah's Closet, which creates kind of custom gift items using the same building. In both of these cases, the use on the property will take place inside the building. They will have the food truck parked on the property. But they are permitted to park one commercial vehicle with any home occupation, so that's not a unique request or a unique aspect to this. And obviously, the actual setup and operation of the food truck will occur off-site, so there should not be any impacts to the neighboring properties, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. The owner applicant Gary or Renee Gunter would like to come forward and speak on behalf? State your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Gunter, and address is thirty-three oh six Tom Bartles Road, Aplin, Georgia, three oh eight oh two. Basically, we're just trying to do a food truck on the property. Actually stated, it's going to be inside the shed that we have. It's a thirty by four shed. We have a provision prior for Hannah's Closet. We do handmade stuff. We're just going to separate the shed in half and get it approved by the Health Department with approval. To recommend your thing, and then we're just going to serve homegrown food to the public that will let us serve to them.
Is that what your food trucks will be, is homegrown?
Farm Fresh. It's going to be all local produce and stuff from the local farms and anything within the community.
Okay.
Nothing's going to be, like, it's all going to be fresh stuff.
Right.
Like, homegrown eggs. We got chickens and stuff.
Okay.
Great.
And the cook's back there.
Awesome. More questions?
I think so.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience like to speak in favor? Anyone here would like to speak against? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Farm Fresh at thirty-three oh six Tom Bartles Road.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. H one B two, rezoning from C two to C three. Dylan?
Yes, sir. So this is an application for rezoning. Fed for thirty-nine, thirty-two, and thirty-one. This shows the location of the parcel, just north of Washington Road, High Tower Drive. This is the current zoning for the property, as you can see, surrounded on all sides by C two with some residential nearby. Aerial of the site, as you can see, have another existing site photo here in just a minute. Site is developed effectively with outdoor storage, down yard, as well as a couple warehouse and, like, work buildings. Plat for the property. And this application is also accompanied by a variance request. We're going to roll through the details of this concept plan a little bit more than that request. But with the change in zoning brings additional requirements. C three is generally viewed as a dense, almost industrial zoning compared to the current C two zoning. And we'll roll through the additional requirements and exactly what the applicant is requesting in regard to those variance application. But as you can see, both with the aerial and the existing site photo that we're showing here, this property is surrounded on all sides by pretty dense vegetation. And isn't, it backs up to existing commercial development there along High Tower Drive. It's pretty secluded and hard to view. Think therefore it is a pretty strong candidate to be allowed to transition its zoning. The root of this application is a code change that occurred in two thousand and sixteen that moved contractors' offices with outdoor storage into how this site is already developed to host. That used transitioned from being allowed in C two. C three and industrial zoning back in two thousand and sixteen, however, no new business was proposed for this location since then. So no previous owner of the property needed to apply to update the zoning. Kind of the requirements that we've referenced in the variance application. Again, though, for the zoning request, you can see with this existing photo that it's relatively isolated and difficult to view from any surrounding residential parcels or the right-of-way for High Tower Drive. Think it makes a comfortable applicant for that change in zoning. Beyond that, it's also within the mixed-use activity center here in Martinez. That activity center makes allowance for industrial zoning near its periphery, and as you can see here, not only is this parcel surrounded on all sides by dense vegetation that even if it were developed would be commercial development, noting that it currently holds, it is also near the edge of that character area. So it meets all the requirements you would review, therefore staff is recommending.
Thank you, Dylan. Owner of D C Real Estate Holdings LLC or applicant David Crawford would like to come forward? State your name and address, please.
I'm David Crawford. I'm the owner of the property. My address is six four one five Cobham Road, Aplin, Georgia. And I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Any other member of the audience would like to speak? Any member of the audience would like to speak against this? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file R Z twenty-five dash zero six dash zero seven rezoning for the properties at thirty-nine, thirty-two, and thirty-nine, thirty-six Haley Drive from C two.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, Dylan, H one B three, the variance to section ninety dash one forty-seven Haley Road.
Yes, sir. Just to clarify, this is actually an application for multiple variances. Building setbacks as well as buffer requirements both outlined in section ninety dash one thirty-nine and, like you said, ninety dash one forty-seven. Again, this is the location for the exact same parcels that we were just looking at. And the zoning, C two, previous application. Aerial of the photo, an aerial photo of the site. Plat for the property. Existing site photo. And an concept plan submitted by the applicant for this. We will run through this as best we can. First, and probably easiest thing to kind of recognize on this color-coded concept plan is the red X's all represent items details of this property that are effectively going to be eliminated. The applicant is proposing to abandon that central lot line that runs through the existing. Creating any setback concerns for that existing building by doing so. He's also planning to eliminate the awnings shown sort of on the exterior of that existing building. Part of the reason for that is to install a functioning parking lot there along the northern edge of that structure. Also several auxiliary storage structures sort of in the planned northeastern section of this property shown with several red X's there as well. He is planning to, well. The green areas along the periphery of the outdoor store, lay-down yard, are shown. They, those areas effectively have pre-existing vegetation that the applicant. Plans to generally leave the areas of that perimeter untouched. Part of the requirements with the change in zoning is buffering along all the exterior lot lines. Obviously, that's not terribly functional along this northern lot line where you see the driveway serves both this parcel and the couple parcels to the north of this one. So in lieu of that lot line requirement for buffering, the applicant buffer along the exterior of the lay-down yard. The thin black lines along the northern perimeter of that lay-down yard represent where opaque slats will be installed. Chain link fence to help kind of satisfy the opaque fencing requirement of the structural buffer code. The yellow is where he's proposing to install the code-required ten-foot landscaping that would augment that opaque. Again, the green is where there's natural vegetation that he is of with this application. And the blue lot lines along west and south of this property border vegetated property. Along the south, it's CSX right-of-way, so there's additional separation from any other adjacent properties other than that there. Additionally, the same C two property that's densely vegetated and undeveloped borders both the northern lot line and the western lot line. Again, as of now, it's densely vegetated. If it were to be developed later, you know, the developer of that site would understand what he's developing next to. Generally, asking the applicant to buffer in these areas largely be ineffective, so. Staff is relatively comfortable with that. Last aspect of the applicant's application is the western edge of this, more western of the two existing structures on the site. That building is roughly about twelve feet from that lot line. That is within the setback allow, the setback dictated by the C three. Seeking relief from that setback requirement so that he does not have to shift that existing. Which again, staff is comfortable with. It kind of helps insulate that lot line a little bit from outdoor store. Again, we think, staff generally thinks that this plan submitted by the applicant represents a healthy balance between existing shortcomings of the site, helping to ensure that it's screened from view from both High Tower Drives, right-of-way, as well as any neighboring properties, either commercial or residential. And so with a couple added conditions, one being that landscaping and the opaque slats be installed and approved by the county prior to issuance of occupational tax for the property, that means that landscaping and that opaque fencing will need to be installed for operation of business. A condition that we're proposing to keep the applicant accountable. And then the second one is just to ensure that the reductions and exceptions to code that are being requested are restricted to what is shown in this concept plan. So given those, provided those conditions, staff is comfortable with the request and recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crawford, do you have anything to add? Okay. Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against here? Do you have any questions? Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions of file V A twenty-five zero six zero one. Variances to reduce the buffer and setback requirements at thirty-nine, thirty-two, and thirty-nine, thirty-six Haley Road per the concept plan submitted May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay, H one B four, major S one revision on Camper Club Road. Will?
Senator Sheriff's request for a major revision off Camper, off Camper Club Road to revise building subaction twenty feet to zero feet and remove buffers on this property. Location of the property, again, off Camper Club Road, which is off of Mistletoe Road, way to the south. Currently is in S one special. Everything around it is in R four. An aerial view of the site. And the site itself going into it off of Mistletoe Road and the plot of the property. So this property was rezoned back in nineteen eighty-five, like many of the, we'll call them the lake recreational properties that were kind of developed before this time. They were zoned R four. The county came and said, hey, we need to rezone all these things. They were often rezoned in the eighties. At that time, S one had setbacks attached to it. You saw the narrative, but you also, the setbacks are also at play. Those are all twenty feet. It is very common for lots of these places not to meet those requirements. They're often getting done before zoning was in place or before anybody was checking on these things. So what happens over time, we will run into them when we come in and do a building permit or something out here, we'll say, hey, here's the issue. And then we'll be basically at this stage of, hey, let's revise the zoning. Really no issues from our standpoint to drop it down to zero feet for the building setback or for the buffer to basically be eliminated totally. Again, there's stuff out there that's right on that core line that's been there for a minute. The core, though, has some concerns. They are not in favor of folks getting close to their lines, even though they've got plenty of stuff that's mighty close at the end of the day. So there is a condition regarding that. Again, with this, this is going to be pretty subtle. We'll move forward for stuff for the core. Basically, an annual survey is going to be required showing where the foundations are, footing, slabs, whatever they're using to build a structure. footing, slabs, whatever they're using to build a structure is in relation to that core line. From future land use side of things, it's within the open space character area. That includes the lake. That includes these types of activities. No, no concerns with, with reducing it from that standpoint. Again, staff requires approval with that sole condition. That includes staff recommendation.
Thank you, Will. Owner of Camper Club or applicant SD Johnson would like to come forward and speak? Okay, do we have any questions? Any other member would like to speak for? Any member would like to speak against this? Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval with condition of file RZ 25-06-08 major S1 revision to reduce the rear setback to zero feet at Camper Club Road.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five zero. Okay, next order of business, H1V5, the rezoning for R3 to S1, Old Evans Road.
This is an application for rezoning at 418 Old Evans. Shows the location of the parcel, the intersection of Old Evans Road Parkway, directly east of the intersection of Old Evans Road, Briarwood Drive. This shows the zoning of the parcel again. Currently, it's R3. It's also in a predominantly... Part again by R3 single. This is a plat for the property. Aerial view of the property. Some details of this site have changed, which we'll see on the next slide. So this is a October 2022 street view of the property compared to five street view. Again, the current zoning for the property is R3. However, the applicants are seeking to develop the site for the operation of food pantry and clothing closet ministry. Obviously, at this point, they've already begun a significant amount of site work and shown on this particular note is the amount of fill that they've added to the site as well as paying a nine-car parking lot. That work to the site has been performed unpermitted up to now. And so in meeting with the applicants, the county and staff communicated the requirement to change the zoning as well as get all of the required permitting to bring the site into compliance. As a part of this review, multiple other engineering services departments with the county have also taken a look at this site. This is the first step on that path to bring the site into full compliance for, of this site for the church. This shows the existing site as of now. Here, the most important thing to note is the installation of the privacy fence against the two shared residential lot lines. And this is the proposed concept plan for the continued development of the site. And it addresses stormwater. It shows buffers with both landscaping as well as the opaque fencing that's already installed on the property against both of those residences as well as 10-foot landscaped road frontages. Of important note for its effect on the surrounding area, as you saw on both the street view and this plan, the only driveway is proposed to continue directly onto and off of Old Evans Road opposed to making use of Briarwood Drive at all. It's helpful because there is no reason for traffic to or from the site to make use of Briarwood Drive, which would impact the many residences Briarwood Drive serves. Additionally, with the nature of the services that they're offering, they have very limited business hours. Generally, all the business takes place before 6:00 PM and only on several, not the full work weeks. Thursdays predominantly, but nothing post 6:00 PM again, with a view to not negatively impacting the surrounding residential area. The parcel is within the in-towns neighborhood character area on the future development map. While generally, most of the uses in this character area are, you know, projected to be residential in nature, there is allowance for some services to serve those residential uses. In this case, we think services offered by the clothing closet and the food ministry likely serve the surrounding community in direct vicinity. And so I think that satisfies the five requirements in this regard, and so staff is recommending it.
Okay, thank you, Dylan. The owner of Grace Baptist Church or applicant William Haley, would you like to come forward and speak?
Pastor Haley cannot be here tonight. My name's Greg Mason, 4119 Clinton Way East in Martinez, Georgia. I am the local missions pastor and the one who is responsible for the day-to-day operation of Grace Place Mission Center. We've already been operating for two and a half years in a, I always tell everybody, right across from Bob's Tropical Fish and a little, little strip mall right there. We do operate a food pantry and closed closet. We are open three days a week, Tuesdays from nine to five, Thursdays from nine to three, and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We've operated with expanded hours with the idea, I know these ministries have done a lot of different ways. We offer extended hours in order to keep down on crowds and things like that. We've been operating in that strip mall with other merchants, and we certainly don't want to encroach on, on their businesses and everything with that. And we've been very successful with that. It's more of a, when you walk in the mission center, it seems more like a retail establishment than what you might expect, but we give everything away. So it is geared primarily toward families, families with children, and we have things for every member of the family, as well as the food pantry. So, and Pastor Haley wanted me to reiterate that the issues with the parking lot paving and things like that, that we're, we'll do everything that is required to bring that up to code, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Do we have any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak? State your name and address for the record.
Robert Titus with the... Lane. Peter, answer any questions that's related to the development. Go through, go through everything to make sure that we're complying with the land development code.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions? We have no questions. Thank you.
Questions?
Any, come forward.
How you doing? Jeff Lamb at 4747 Bass Drive. We moved down here in 2015. That was our residence of 4100 Briarwood. We lived there and we sold our home to our in-laws that live there now. I'm sure you all, granddad, parents and everything like that, something that's big in this world is trapping the children and just such disgusting stuff we see on the news. This building, I've seen it progress, lived there, enjoyed that area, but it sits low. And our children, I got, got a son that's four years old and a daughter's eight years old, and they're up there on a higher level. So anybody can come and see my children that are out there at the grandparents' house every day that they're being watched before they go to school, they go Augustus Christian. So we're not very happy about this. We haven't been told about this. And for them to say that they got this turnaround, the only parking is on Briarwood. There, nobody parks on Old Evans Road. And so it would be on Briarwood. It'd be in front of my, my mother's house and where my kids are all the time. So I'm not very happy about it. Anything I can do to try to stop it, that's what I'll do because it's not right. And again, I know you guys are all parents and I, I assume you wouldn't want strangers coming out that we don't know who these people, I understand it's a good purpose, but this is a family subdivision. And the minute it gets converted into a commercial, it's a whole different ballgame. We don't know who's coming in, who's leaving. And I'll tell you what, if, if anything happens to my child or my daughter or from some stranger, and I understand it's a good cause, I believe in good cause, I'm a Christian man, I believe in God, but that, that will not be right with me. And so I'm very opposed against this and how this got passed is beyond. So my wife will probably talk and my, my, the owner of the property, her mom. So I just want to speak my piece and we are very against this.
Thank you.
Valerie Lamb, 4747 Bass Drive, Evans, Georgia. We have attended Grace Baptist Church. We enjoy Pastor Haley very much. I'm also a member of the CSRA Food Angels, so we understand what is being served through the Grace Mission. I do appreciate their mission being on or near Bassin Road. It's in a complex where there's other businesses. However, this mission affects our family, it affects my children. I'd like to know how it will also affect the property value of 4100 Briarwood Drive. The gentleman, gonna assume it was the land person of the county, he explained that it wouldn't affect traffic. I believe it will affect traffic because when you get to Briarwood Drive, if you go straight south, Columbia Elementary School was here, you can take a left and go straight to McCormick, which means Grace Mission. As soon as they go to that mission, they'll come through, take McCormick, go straight down Briarwood Drive, increasing traffic in our neighborhood where children play. We do have a lot of immigrant families there with a lot of children, so I'm worried about the traffic coming in, hitting those children. Those children don't speak very good English, so I don't think they'll understand much when it's happening. I do see how it could provide for the neighborhood, however, I'm concerned about property values our children when they are at my parents' house. And I'm also concerned about the bedrooms in the home. Are people going to stay there is my question? So I'm not, I'm not understanding why Grace Baptist needs to have a mission 1.4 miles from their current mission and why they couldn't provide better in the community going further down the road or more into the city of Evans. I've watched the Shell gas station with the homeless people. I've watched the signs with the homeless people asking for money. I've watched them walk to that mission. We have a gas station Circle K right there. What makes them not follow this mission to that mission and at some point rob our house? That's what I'm concerned about. My father's a disabled Vietnam veteran, 100%. He has COPD, he's on oxygen, stays in a bed half the day. My mom's disabled, so there's no way to fight back if something comes for them. Not saying that all low-income people are bad people. Like I said, I'm a member of the Food Angels of the CSRA, so we give constantly. It's just this affects us very closely, my parents and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak, yes or in favor?
Is the existing mission being relocated to this location?
Yes. Yeah, so you can go.
That's the intention. We are moving out of the existing location where we're at, where we're paying rent and moving to this location in order to serve the community. So, and, and we're, you know, we want to be ambassadors for Christ in the community. We want to be good citizens. We want to be good neighbors. We want to do all we can and do everything we can to make sure that the parking is not an issue. Already have the parking lot. We've addressed knowledge of issues around that. We offer the extended hours during business hours that any business would operate within. It is a house. It, it's not a halfway house. It's not a treatment center. Nobody's going to be staying there. As a matter of fact, we, we demoed the one full bathroom that was there in order to use that as a storeroom. So there's only two half baths inside the house. All the other rooms within the house will be used for clothing storage or for food storage. So it's, there's, it's not a treatment facility. It's not a halfway house. Nobody will be there after five, five o'clock in the afternoon would be the latest. That would be me closing up would be the latest that anybody would ever do.
I've got a question. The clientele you have at the other mission that you got, how do they get there?
They drive.
They drive?
Well, well, most drive. Right behind us, there are, there's an apartment complex that's directly behind us. People walk from there. There are, across Riverwatch Parkway, there are people that walk from those. There's some duplexes there and those neighborhoods over there that walk to there. And there are people who already live in the neighborhood that we are hoping to move to who already come to the mission center. So we're just, we're just be moving closer to them.
If I'm feeling them right, their concern is basically the, the people coming into their community. Am I right? That's... Okay.
It's a nine-space parking lot. And...
What's your anticipated volume of traffic?
We, we've already operated for two and a half years at shopping center. Most we've ever had is maybe four to six families at a time. So the nine-space parking lot is well within traffic that we've, that we've been having already for two...
Well, I mean, it does seem like a small parking lot. Do you ever see the traffic backing up Old Evans Road? Would you don't, would you not see that as a problem?
No, we have looked at estimates, talked to the preacher about how many time over there. Said at a maximum, they might have six cars. Estimated about 30 cars. Dan? So anyhow, we, we've estimated 30 trips in a day. And again, it's days a week. Greg, speak to ordering and types of people.
So are you keeping the same hours, what you currently have at the shopping center?
Yeah, that will change. We're not going to change anything in the way we currently operate. The hours will stay the same.
Okay. Oh, we have another. State your name and address, please.
My name is Janet Tours and I live at 4100 Briarwood. I've, I've been there three years now. We have many people come and go because that area is a, most, a lot of the properties are owned by other people and all those homes are rented. Like the home next door to me is rented, it's not always taken care of. I never complain about it. The people across the street, they're mostly elderly ladies living by themselves. How safe is this going to be for all of us as seniors? I know people seem in this, in this state not to care about seniors from where we come from. People are, we care, we probably should stay there because people care about seniors there. The community here is really, really different. Luckily, I'm young at heart, so I can put up with a lot of stuff. My husband's very sick. The people across the street have little children and they run across that street a million times back and forth to my house and their little puppy got killed by a truck because people don't care if we, they go 50 miles down our street. We call and complain, nothing ever happens. And there's a million, seems like you guys have sheriff, police, more than we have back home. We live in a big city and it's taken better care of than a small community. And I have a question to the commission. When you put in a commercial building, is it like back home? All the property values go down? All the property values go down because a commercial building is now. Next door to that will become commercial, and it goes on and on. What's wrong with Riverwatch? And half of that stuff is commercial. Are we going to make Old Evans Road commercial? There's places to rent on Old Evans Road, right where you turn to the post office. That building's been empty now for almost a year. Nobody's gone into it. And it used to be like a food pantry, what's happened to that? Can you tell me? That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. Hey, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ 25-06-09, zoning of the property at 418 Old Evans Road from R3 to S1 for a food pantry, clothing closet, and small group meeting space.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor of this, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Four. Same. Attention. Danielle with the H1B6, major S1 on Gateway.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a major revision to the existing S1 special zoning at 5,000 and 5,010 Gateway Boulevard. This is in regards to the sign allowance for the properties. This shows the location on the north side of Gateway Boulevard, backing up to I-20 on the north. And the property is currently zoned S1. It was rezoned in 2019 for the hospital and medical office building, and it is under construction for that use.
Excuse me, Danielle, we need to have order, we need to have order in the face. I apologize. Danielle, go ahead.
This shows the existing site that is under construction for the new hospital and the overall approved site plan. The original S1 did include some provision for additional signage on this property, particularly in regards to allowing some larger freestanding signage, especially along the interstate as well as parapet signage, which depending on location, under county code, may be considered roof signage and not otherwise allowed. So they did kind of anticipate with the original zoning approval that there was going to be some need for signs outside of the normal county code. Now that they've gotten a little further into the design of the site, there are some additional modifications that they would like to make to that sign allowance. In regards to the freestanding signs, they are proposing two main entrance signs. These comply with the provisions that already exist in the S1, and then they are proposing multiple directional signs with internal to the campus. These also meet the size provisions from that original S1, so this gives us just a better idea of the design and the materials, but there's no particular change to the sizes of the freestanding signage. On the building signage side, these buildings are quite a bit larger than our county code anticipates. Essentially, our county code goes up to, we've got different categories of different sized buildings that get different sign allowances, you know, starting with buildings under 2,500 square feet and going up to buildings that exceed 50,000 square feet. Well, both of these buildings greatly exceed that. The hospital itself is about 245,000 square feet, and then the medical office building is over 93,000. So they're well above that 50,000 range, that's kind of the top end of the county sign code. We get into larger buildings, taller buildings, and they can handle larger signs, and that's kind of the premise behind how the sign code is structured. The reason why the allowances are tied to square footage is that as the buildings get larger and taller, you essentially need to make the signs bigger to make them visible when they're up taller, like four stories up from ground level, or to make them balance when you have just a large building. So the wall signage does have some requests for additional allowance, both for the parapet signage and for the wall signage. In some cases, the letter heights are actually compliant with the original S1, but it's the geometry, kind of how the, the size of the logo relative to the words, and then the fact that we use a single rectangle around the entire sign, so capturing both the logo and the words in one rectangle. And that means you do count some dead space in the sign face area, the way we calculated under code, so that plays into some of the square footage requests as well as some of the wording. So for example, they're going to say Columbia County Medical Center on the I-20 frontage. I think from a Columbia County standpoint, we probably appreciate that, but it does make the sign itself longer. So even though they're using the letter height that they anticipated, the length of the sign means the square footage is over what they originally allowed for. This is kind of a unique use. Again, it's a large building, it's also very much a public health and safety kind of use to be able to find the hospital, to be able to get to the correct entrances. And so we don't have any particular concerns with allowing these larger signs in this case. The sign plan does also include some ability for them to make some modifications without having to come back to you guys. That includes being able to move the signs around, particularly in regards to like the directional signs on the site, to provide that internal direction as the hospital and the medical buildings get open and start functioning. If they see that they need to move them around, they can do that without having to come back. Same thing with the wall signs, if they find they need to move one of the entrance signs to better direct people, they can do that. What they cannot do is increase the area more than 10%. So there is a cap on that, they can't just add signs or, or multiple signs anyway, above that 10% allowance. The other thing it does allow is for them to add backer panels behind these wall signs. That would most likely be part of the branding, it would most likely be in the brand color. That is going to make the signs stand out a little bit more, but when you're talking a, a public safety use, that's not necessarily a bad thing, to make it a little more obvious. So we don't have any particular concerns with that either. In terms of future development, this is within the activity center, it's obviously already zoned for the hospital, we're not changing that, we're just changing the, the sign allowance for the site. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Danielle. Owner of the AU Medical or applicant Jennifer Mills would like to come, Miller, I'm sorry, Jennifer Miller would like to come forward and speak in favor? Okay. Do we have any questions?
I don't have any.
Questions, see. Any other member of the audience would like to speak, in favor or against? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to recommend approval of file RZ 250610, major S1 revision to adopt a master sign plan for the property at 5,000 and 5,10 5010 Gateway Boulevard.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Do I have any other staff commissioner comments? Any public comments? I'd like your motion for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion, all those in favor? Adjourn.